Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
I move we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, can the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
We have approval of minutes, regular meeting of September 27, 2023. Action approval requesting an excuse absence for the September 27, 2023 regular meeting from Commissioner Halsted and action on approval out of condition to the preliminary plat, Strawberry Hill Estate 2023 addition, Resolution PZ 2023-19, and that is your consent agenda.
All right, are there any public comments or any of the consent agenda items just read into record by the clerk? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda and the agenda? Seeing none, they are approved. Move on to item C, scheduled public comment, we have none, item D, unscheduled public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to an item not on tonight's agenda?
And if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, you'll need to press, you need to raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
Good. All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to item E, consideration of plaits, we have none this evening, takes us to item F, F1 is Resolution PZ 2023-19, recommending approval to rezone the properties located at 103 Birch Street and 1202, 1204, and 1206 First Avenue from general commercial to suburban residential zoning district. And due to the discrepancies with the future land use map, Resolution PZ 2023-19 will not, was not included in the packet and no action will be taken at this meeting, however, because it was advertised as a public hearing, we would like to open it up to anyone who would like to have public comment. At this time, we'll go ahead and if you can come forward and state your name and just whether you're a resident of the city for the record, and you can stand or sit, either way, and turn on that light, is it on? Okay, there you go. Thanks.
I'm Nancy Wiles, I am the owner of 1202, 1204, 1206 First Avenue. We've lived in that location for 39 years. It's always been residential. I advocated with the last comprehensive plan to have it changed to mixed use. I'd like to be able to build my house back if it burned down. I'd like to be able to leave one of each of the unoccupied lots to my children that they could build on if they wanted to. And my goal was to make sure that that neighborhood stays the neighborhood rather than become a business center. I actually went out and canvassed the neighborhood, the signatures and the petition are all neighbors. We are registered voters in the City of Kenai.
Good, I'll see if anyone has any questions for you. Looks like we're, all right, good. All right, anyone else wishing to come forward and speak? Come on up.
My name is Keith Schaefer, I live at 104 Birch, which is directly across from the 103 project. Lived at 104 since 1987 and would really not, would not enjoy having a commercial business right across the house, or across the street from my house. That is a concern for me. And like Nancy, we would like to see that lot at 103 rezoned to residential, so that could be prohibited. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? And nobody online, you can check.
And if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand.
All right, and that's all we can do with that tonight, so it'll come back before us, I think, at the next meeting. Takes us down to our next item.
Point of order?
Nope.
Point of order?
Certainly.
Don't we have to acknowledge this in our minutes that we are postponing it to the next meeting?
I'll leave that to the clerk.
Or just, we just board it out and the world accepts it.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Glenn Denning. We have, after speaking with the city attorney and the city clerk, we've decided that at this time, there would be no action on it, so it does not require a motion to postpone.
Follow up?
A little sketchy, but that's okay.
All right, then we will move on to item F2, which is Resolution PZ 2023-20, granting an encroachment permit for a multi-tenant commercial building to encroach into the required east side yard setback on the property located at 735 Bay Lane Avenue in the limited commercial zoning district. Can I get a motion, please? Vice Chair Halsted.
I move, we approve Resolution PZ 2023-20 granting encroachment permit for a multi-tenant commercial building.
And a second?
One second.
All right, staff report, Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate and Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, this is a, yep, holding. So as noted, this is an encroachment permit on a property located at 735 Bay Lane. As you can see there, there's the aerial map, highlighted in red is the subject parcel. This parcel was approved, a building permit for a multi-tenant commercial building, I believe it was 10 units, and it's currently under construction. During construction, they realized they needed a boiler room, so where they proposed the building, it did not anticipate the boiler room to encroach. Therefore, they have applied for this encroachment to, for the boiler room to encroach approximately three feet, one inch into that required side yard setback to the east property line. In the limited commercial zoning district, the side yard setback is 15 feet. Therefore, what they're proposing is that building would be, or the boiler room will be approximately 11.92 feet away from that east property line. I do want to note the surrounding area, the parcels to the west and east are currently vacant. What is zoned in purple you see there is limited to commercial, and the surrounding in green is rural residential, and to the south is borough jurisdiction. And to the north, directly north of it, is a residential use, and then to the south you have KB Road. As with all encroachment permit, it requires to meet four criteria. One criteria being one, if it meets the definition of an encroachment, meaning any object or structure constructed or located in a manner that's not set forth in the development requirement table, which is the case, because they are not 15 feet away, they are 11.92 feet away from that property line. I included in this presentation, which I do enjoy, that I have the ability now to share my screen with my laptop to zoom in as needed to show you, I provided the line, the solid line is the property line, the dash line is that 15 foot required setback, and in red is where that proposed boiler room is, so it's estimated to be three feet, one inches into that 15 foot setback, so. And just to go back, criteria two says as long as it doesn't encroach upon a federal, state, or city right of way or utility easements, there aren't any easements along this property line. Criteria requires that the issuance will not authorize a use not allowed in this zoning district. So while we may, do not know exactly what the each tenants are, but just like any other property use, they'll be subject to the underlying zoning district, so use is allowed in the limited commercial is what they're limited to unless they pursue a conditional use, which then your commission would see that. And the last criteria is an encroachment permit is not located across a plotted lot line, in which case this is approximately 11.92 feet away from that lot line. So this request meets all the four criteria required for your commission to approve an encroachment permit. Therefore, staff is recommending that your commission adopt this resolution, approving it to allow a multi-tenant commercial building to encroach into that required 15 foot east side yard setback by three feet, one inch. And this concludes staff's presentation, happy to answer any questions your commission may have.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will open it up for public testimony, anyone wishing to testify to PZ 2023-20.
And members of the public who are on Zoom, if you would like to speak to this resolution, please raise your hand so that we can be unmuted. If you are connecting through the phone, you will want to press star nine. So, all right, Billy, you are allowed to speak.
Okay, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I just wanted to make note, I live at that rural residential property to the north, and when I bought this place, that lot was residential, and they changed it to limited commercial, which I'm not going to lie, I wasn't a fan of, similar to the testimonies we heard previously of the people that wanted to, you know, have their residential areas. But I've just been having concerns with this property since they've been building construction. I've lost internet service, I've lost, I've had power outages now, yesterday we lost power, and I'm just uneasy with how many issues I'm already experiencing just in the initial construction phase of this new property and multi-unit complex.
All right, go ahead.
Billy, can I get your full name for the record, please?
Ah, yes, Billy Anderson. And that's actually Jonathan, I should probably note, I go by Billy, but my legal name's Jonathan.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I'm going to see if any of the commissioners have any questions for you, so I'm going to check with them real quick. It doesn't appear so, so, well, Commissioner Glenn Denning.
Yeah, the testifier stated that this was recently rezoned, I recall something about that, and what is the difference in zoning between the former zoning and what it is now as far as encroachments and building setbacks and types of structures and where they can be placed, and how it impacts present and future neighbors?
Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate, and thank you Commissioner Glenn Denning for that question. So the rezone was actually approved back in 2020, it was rural residential, just like the rest of the area. And when it comes to the development requirements such as setback heights, they're exactly identical, side yard setbacks are 15, the front is 20. Use is obviously is going to look a little different, limited commercial is rather restrictive when it comes to commercial, because it's intended to kind of buffer the arterial streets from residential use, and that's why probably the rezone was approved.
Commissioner Glenn Denning.
Yeah, and this property that's under consideration fronts on K Beach, right? So it would be a transitional lot in the theory of a multi-use or limited.
Correct, yep.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see if anyone else has any questions for Mr. Anderson, while we have him on there. Commissioner Fikes.
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Halsted.
Well, it was my understanding that even though that frontage is K Beach, they're actually accessing those businesses from Bay Lane, is that correct?
That is correct.
Just making sure we remember that correctly.
So, all right, well, we'll just let Mr. Anderson off the hook here if nobody has any questions for him. It looks like we're done there, so thank you, Mr. Anderson. And then there was one other person.
If there is anyone else on Zoom who wants to speak at this time, I will go ahead and unmute you or allow you to talk, and you can unmute if you want to speak.
All right, looks like we're done, we'll go ahead, close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion, any discussion. Commissioner Fikes.
So, yeah, back to Commissioner Halsted's comments, so can you staff possibly elaborate more on the egress or easement off of Bay Lane? I wasn't aware that that was going to be a traffic pattern.
Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate and Commissioner Fikes. So I have what before pulled up here is actually recorded plat, I will zoom in a little bit of what that looks like. When you look at the notes of this plat, it does state that no private access to the state maintained right of way, so no access off of KB. Therefore, when the rezone was reviewed and approved, the only way to access these was off Bay Lane. It's really difficult typically for access to go off of KB, mostly on a corridor or an arterial like that, you want to limit access, direct access onto it. So I can't speak directly from why the rezone was approved, knowing that it was being changed from residential to limited commercial, knowing that potentially the impact to a residential street, but it was approved in 2020. And according to this plat, if they came in from a planning and building process, we wouldn't allow access off of KB unless they got state approval. We have no jurisdiction on that.
Yeah, and I will follow that up, I remember this, and I know several other ones, that if there is an alternate access to the properties, the state will be hard pressed to grant any kind of driveway permits and stuff, so I know that's, that was the reasoning behind that. I know we also had talked about letting them come down, whatever, is it VIP drive or whatever it is, and having possibly a frontage road in the front of it at one time, and I think the applicant at the time didn't really like that because it would have to be 50 feet back off of K Beach Road, I think, and so it kind of ate the property up a little bit, so I believe we determined that Bay Lane was the best route for everybody, so.
So as a follow-up, who is the maintainer of Bay Lane Avenue, and is it up to borough standards or city standards, and is it going to be maintain, I guess the maintenance of it, so you're adding extra traffic in a residential area?
Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate and Commissioner Fikes, you know, I would have to get a couple of minutes just to pull up our city maintained road to determine who is responsible for maintaining it. The only time the city maintains it is if it was constructed to standard. Unfortunately, a lot of the streets within the City of Kenai weren't engineered, so the city only maintains those that were engineered to our standard, so if you give me two minutes, I can pull that up and see if Bay Lane is included in that maintenance road.
Yeah, I realize that's not necessarily the topic, but it's definitely a spin-off of the application, I realize it's to deal with the encroachment, but during our discussion, I'm sure that traffic is going to be an issue, so whoever you can help with some information on that, thanks.
All right, maybe we'll just take a quick at ease for her to find that, because it looks like we're going to hit her with more questions, so we'll take a quick at ease. Now we're back on the record. Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate, so going back to your question, Commissioner Fikes, as I found in our comp plan, there's a list of maintained roads, and this Bay Lane is a maintained road, meaning it was engineered, therefore we maintain the snow, and if there were improvements that needed to be done and keep it clear, it would be the city's responsibility within that right of way.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question, I guess for Director Mitchell. So we're going with the premise of the three foot, one inch, how did we get that? Is that from the applicant? Did you guys go pull some kind of a string line to get that? I would be okay with approving three foot, one, but what if we determined at some point that it's six feet or something, should we make an amendment that we would say up to four feet or something like that, so that if it does come back later, that there's a problem, we can address it, or what would be the proper steps? It doesn't appear that it was done by a surveyor, that we can say it's exactly three foot, one.
Thank you Chair Twate for that question. So I always encourage the applicant, so it's the applicant who provided this number, actually originally it was like two feet, 11 inches, and then last minute she had her contractor come out and triple measure, and three foot, one inch was what came out. And I always encourage the applicants to kind of give themselves a buffer as well, that way they don't have to come back. It's up to your discretion as commission to ask for an as-built for something so simple as a boiler room, it's not habitable space, and I'm not too worried about, I hope, meaning like before, it's not like the edge of a restaurant, like if something happened for the encroachment, typically setbacks are in place to create buffers, and with a boiler room being fully enclosed, if you wanted to require an as-built for that boiler, but the edge of where the actual building and where the facility is being utilized or habitable space does meet the 15 foot setback. So I'd just kind of be clear that the partial portion of what's encroaching is just the boiler room, it was after the fact of, we forgot to incorporate this boiler room, so we have to put it outside. And so the measurement came from their contractor and from the applicant, and I don't foresee that being an issue to give them more than four, it is in their best interest to ask what they need, and if they're off in the future, then they need to come back and ask for an addition, or they have a non-conforming structure, and that is on their, that's their responsibility, not ours.
Commissioner Glenn Denning.
Yeah, just a question, a procedural question, you know, someone comes in, they want to build something within the city, and it's a commercial structure. What amount of scrutiny and surveillance and permission giving does the city have to recognize the parameters, the design of the building, and maybe even require for, requirement for a boiler room in sub-artery conditions? Does the city have any ownership in this, or did it just, we just approve it and give it the blessing and on they go? I would like to think that our building inspector went out and looked at a drawing and saw its placement, and perhaps realized a discrepancy, but it's perhaps wishful thinking, and it might be taking us down a rabbit hole, but I think the city is culpable a little bit in this too, to see that there's a building, oh my goodness, there's no boiler room, and now the boiler room has to risk the structures being non-conforming.
Director Mitchell.
Thank you Chair Twate, Commissioner Glenn Denning for your question. I'm not the building official, so I can't speak for him, but I will say that for me, and hopefully this is the standard, is that when we look at building permits, I'm looking at previous building permits to see what's changed for existing buildings, obviously with a brand new, I'm just looking at what's being proposed. If I were to speak on the building review plan checker, yes, ideally, we would love to see mechanicals within the proposed building set to determine, oh, where is this? Sometimes applicant will propose it within the footprint, and then they decide to change things up, I don't know exactly how this came about. You know, it was the applicant who came to me and said, hey, the plan of fitting this boiler room with, for this building unfortunately is going to go on the outside. I don't ask for the details of where it was in the building, because that's not my purview, but in the sense of I'm not a building plan checker to check if that was there in the first place, but I see what you're pointing out completely, you know, just like I have to do a thorough review, I go back and if there's records of it to double check, if it's an existing building, if it doesn't meet setback today, I do go back to billing record history to see, was it legally built? I don't just do a blind eye and say just because it's there, it's permitted. So unfortunately, I can't speak for the billing official, but I understand what you're saying, and I will have that conversation.
Your point's well taken, and, yeah, we note to self, you know, listens learned, probably we should put a little microscope on it and just think, you know, what the footprint is on this, on this property, and what are the strictures, and just ask yourself a question if you're reviewing a building, and you say, well, what's the source of heat, you know, and where is the boiler? Thank you.
Commissioner Kostin.
And I have concerns as well about encroaching beyond that three foot, one limit, how would you restrict that? And my second concern here is, and I need to be tutored on this perhaps potentially, but principal permitted uses for this footprint shall not exceed 3,000 square feet, yet the building is 10,000. Am I missing something here in limited commercial?
Director Mitchell.
Where are you seeing that, Commissioner Kostin, the 3,000 square feet?
It's in the city code, limited commercial zone, principal permitted uses.
Thank you Commissioner Kostin for passing that over, that is a really good catch, because I did not see that in the land use table. Typically, we don't limit the building size within zones, so I did not catch that one, to be honest with you. But yes, in that zone, it would have been limited to 10,000 square, I mean 3,000, according to our, in the zoning district.
All right, so we do have somebody that had their hand up or has their hand up that was online earlier. And I don't know that they are here for this. But if they are, we're gonna, since they've logged on here, we're gonna go ahead and get them to bring up some testimony if they wish to. All right, go ahead.
I also have property here in the residential area. And since this has been rezoned for commercial, I guess most people were automatically thinking that the traffic would be routed out to Californski Beach Road, not a baleen, because if it's going to be commercial, that means there's going to be a lot of traffic. Baleen's going to need improvement immediately once these other lots start getting filled up. If all that traffic is going to come off of K Beach and on to Baleen, that's just going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, and I think if you heard earlier, you know, I remember that an option to go off of KB Drive from the state wasn't an option if there's an alternate access. And so, that's why we ended up with it in going on to Baleen back in 2000. So, but a point well taken. I'll see if anyone has any questions for you.
And I see your screen name is Richard Burton. Can you confirm that that is your name?
Yes, my name is Richard Burton.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, I mean, does that, so that means it's already determined? There's no way for any of that traffic to go to K Beach Road? It's already been determined everything is going to go to Baleen, basically, is what you're saying, right?
That is correct. I think the only option would be the one lot that comes down VIP that you could access that from the side. But all the other ones would have their primary access, for sure, off of Baleen.
Seems pretty sure cited, since they're going to be commercial lots. I mean, I'm sure everybody was already thinking businesses could be on K Beach. So, if they have the business, it's going to be all routed right into the neighborhood. It's just Baleen Avenue is going to need improvements immediately.
Yeah, and I would guess that's probably something to look for in the future, for sure, near future, perhaps. All right, we're gonna go back to closing public hearing again and bring it back for any further discussion. And so, I don't know. Like I said, I would like to think that they're dead accurate with their three-foot, one, but I would like to protect ourselves, potentially, by giving them up to four feet, perhaps, or something like that, as an amendment. And then, when and if they do a survey, and it comes back that it's three foot, 11, we're still okay. I don't know what dimension that boiler room is. I don't know, was there any dimensions given for what that size is?
No. I don't have the exact dimensions for that one. But they'll have to amend their building permit.
And I guess, question for you, and maybe you might not know the answer, is, so is the boiler room already constructed? Or is it now they know they need to do it, and they're proposing that? Because it may would think they could possibly squeeze it by three feet and make it four feet wider or something like that, and accommodate the same thing. But it might already be under construction, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Chair Twate, for that question. Typically, what I've learned when it comes to encroachment permit, people who come in, they kind of already built it. I think the problem with this boiler room is they didn't realize that in order to fit what they needed, it's, I believe, is already constructed. And that's why they came in, they're able to measure. Otherwise, I don't know how they measured it.
Very good. Commissioner Fikes.
And do we have the applicant available for questions? And then, also, as other testimony has been brought up in discussion, is there a way to get some other answers, or?
Well, we don't have the applicant here, and nobody online for it. And then, what other questions were you thinking?
So, the traffic pattern's been brought up as an issue, and then also the zoning, as far as the size. So, do we need to, I agree, I understand this is about encroachment. But again, discussion has been brought forward. So, do we keep moving forward? Or do we try and get some resolution to these answers?
Well, I think the access, for sure, is determined. And that was plotted, and that is what it is. I don't see any additional discussion needed for that. As far as the size goes, I would, I guess, defer back to Director Mitchell on that. Now, they have six units or something inside that building. I don't know if it's five or six or something like that. So, maybe that is the determining factor of their 3,000 square feet units. And if they're, have a firewall, you know, where they've got a one-hour wall between them or something, that might determine some of that as well. I don't, again, without knowing what the building officials looked at, I have no idea.
So, to answer both your questions, Chair Twate and Commissioner Fikes, in terms of access and being shared about the improvement, as your commission, we do have capital improvement plans. Your commission can then recommend that Baleen will be placed on the capital improvement for future on the radar. And that's how we address that. Because we approved the rezone, we anticipated that it'll be limited commercial uses on here. So, that's all you can do moving forward, is if you believe that this is going to be an issue, we can propose that. Being said, I mean, I would like to see that there's more than one parcel that's commercial to generate that much, to then put it on the capital improvement. But if your commission really feels strongly about this based on the comments received, sure, we can present it as a capital improvement on the list for the city to work on. That is one suggestion. And then, in terms of the footprint, that is my mistake, and I will apologize for it. But unfortunately, the building permit has been issued. And typically, in my experience from legal, when you issue a building permit, you kind of give them the vested right to construct unless there's really health hazard welfare issues. So, I definitely will look into the history of why we put that limitation in the limited commercial to 3,000 square feet building footprint, and get back to your commission on why. And maybe, you know, we have them come back and ask for a variance, so we clean up my mistake.
Thank you.
Commissioner Costin.
And again, I'm going to go back to that boiler. From my experience with boilers, probably is higher pressure than these household boilers. But if I have a pressurized system, and it needs to be certified by the state, I'm one's much distance from my lot line if I'm living next door from that boiler. So, I have a little concern about getting too close on the encroachment.
Yeah, and I guess the other question I have now is, is that access from outside, access to the boiler room that's, you know, beyond now closer to the property line? Or is it come from inside? It would be nice to have a plan to look at on that. But it sounds like it's beyond our scope, so.
Commissioner Glenn Danning.
Yeah, just in view of all of this discussion and happenstance, could we require an ASBelt when all this is done? So, we have a clear memorandum of what was approved this evening?
Director Mitchell.
Just to make sure I understood your question, Commissioner Glenn Danning, that you just want to, as a condition, ask for an ASBelt certification at the end of it? Yeah, we can add any condition you want, as well as, you know, if you, as Commissioner Twate brought up, if he's worried about the door access to it going towards the east property line, we could put the stipulation at the access doors to either face the north and the south as well, since we don't know. And if that's a concern of where the door is not facing the property line, to further encroach towards that required side dirt setback, we can put those stipulations.
And the applicant owns the property to the east, correct, as well?
Correct. And I can pull it up on my map real quick. And yeah, that can be another thing. If your commission doesn't approve this, they could just do a lot line adjustment and meet the setback as well. So, give me 30 seconds, I can look Borough's website real quick for that. Is there any other questions that you have for staff? Okay.
Commissioner Fikes.
There's nobody else online, we closed the public.
Correct, yeah.
So, correct, both west and east properties are owned by the same applicant, by the applicant.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Vice Chair Halsted.
Well, just for some of the questions that were raised tonight, without some of the clarification that we are getting, would it be prudent to possibly delay this one till our next meeting or postpone it? Until we get more, I guess, answers to some of those questions that we have? It just seems, this seems rather odd that there are some unknowns here that we didn't really see.
Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair Twate and Vice Chair Halsted. You know, the question, whether to postpone it, if you want, if that gives you more assurance to make a decision, hearing it from the applicant? Is it really the size of how much is encroached? Sure, if that makes sense. Or you can put stipulation. If your concern is just, is it further encroachment to the door and to setback, then you can put that as a condition. Because if that's your concern, you know, you should make sure that they don't further encroach with the door access out to it. But if that doesn't suffice and give you assurance to make a decision today, that you really need to know the dimension of this boiler room to see how much is encroaching, I would say, yeah, it makes sense to postpone it.
Well, I think, yeah, just some of the, I don't really think the issue is so much the boiler room. I see that addition on there, if the door is there, or if it's facing one way or the other, or if it's internal. But I think it was just some of these things that come up that's more. I'm a little concerned that that size is how we approved it, being the size that it is. And then, now they're expanding on to that. And, I don't know, I don't want to waste time, either. If we're, if we all are of the same mind of it, then I wouldn't say, "Let's delay it."
So, are you saying that what you'd like to see, if we did postpone it, would be just to see the actual amount of the encroachment into the setback? Is that what you're looking for, then?
Yeah, I think it would be, the, I guess, the goal of that delay would be giving the applicant an opportunity to be here and present, you know, what the plan is, what the thought is, moving forward with that encroachment, and how that's going to affect her secondary lot. I mean, is that going to be an ingress area that's going? Are they making passage from the front to the back of the lot through that, where that encroachment would be an issue? Or is it just, it's not even an issue because they're not even passing through that space? I mean, there's lots of questions that, if they were here, that probably would get clarification. But again, it could just be, we're wasting time, and we should just vote on it and go, because we are, if we take it for what it is right now, we could probably make a good enough decision.
Yeah, and again, not knowing what level of completion or construction it's in, I usually, it's been my experience, you see these things when they're getting ready to close, and they do an ASBelt, and all of a sudden, now it's holding up a closing or something like that. I don't think that's the case with this. So, I don't know that a two-week delay would be terrible for anybody. And it would give us some potential answers, I think, if they can be here. And if you could get a surveyor out there in that amount of time to do that, too, I don't know.
Commissioner Fikes.
Just to offer some experience, the Borough just received a remand for a property in the Sport Lake area that had encroached their garage into the building setback. And so, we were tasked by the judge to review the criteria and the findings that allowed us to reach our decision of approving that encroachment. And so, through that process, we were able to reach the same conclusion. And then, also, immediately before that, we had another property in the K Beach area that was looking to construct a garage immediately in their front yard in the setback. And we ultimately denied that one. So, having experienced both of those, one that was completed construction, we had saw it, we had made a decision on it, and it had gotten remanded. And in that second time around, we were presented with some findings from the applicant, from a surveyor, with a very lengthy report. And I can tell you through discussion that that was what, it was a huge help to pinpoint a lot of these questions that were developed in discussion, and nail down those findings. And so, to see the experience of having something ruled on, kicked to the courts during appeal, and brought back, and then have another case of a similar situation, under construction. We had one that was completed, and then they repealed it after the person that completed it. This one was under construction. So, both of those experiences, and then, like you say, seeing, I agree 100% with what Mr. Halsted is saying. But I can also see the solutions that some of the directors offered. Again, the applicant is only asking for an encroachment permit. I get that. And we could probably, I think, approve that tonight with what we have before us, with some of those solutions being conditions applied to it. And again, as Chairman Twate had stated, the applicant has property to the west and the east. So, he's already nailed down who it's going to impact. He's in the middle of those. So, it's unfortunate that that person or those individuals aren't here to testify, and that would certainly be helpful. But again, at the end of the day, this is just the encroachment. But I'm sure it's going to come back to us again for more. So, I'm kind of torn by that, but I don't know if that helps that input.
Commissioner Glenn Danning.
Just going back, well, you brought up the Borough rules. There's four findings, or select menu of findings that you have to, what was it, say, find an alternate solution to a standard, okay? And one of them is, does the subject at hand, does it fundamentally complete or meet the requirements fundamentally? In other words, does it come close of the standard? And I would say here it does, based on the observation and testimony of our director. And so, now, all we're asking is, going forward, you get a certificate of occupation, for example. Probably should have a little ASBelt drawing of this thing. So, it's memorialized as to what we accept it as truth, as fact, and then what is real when people occupy it. And the two should be the same. And if we're understanding or trusting that the builder, they found it, and they say, "Okay, we're, you know, X amount of dimension out of spec." And we're saying, "It's fit for purpose. Perhaps, I think, we can approve it, and then just ask for a, ask for an ASBelt, and it'll be memorialized in the, in the, in the final permit. And should this thing ever have to be refinanced or approved for other financing, it will be, it will be shown that we accepted it as is, based on decisions that were made most, both administratively and by our actions tonight." You okay, Jeff?
I'm in agreement with that. You know, I just crunched some quick numbers. And if, say, that mechanical room is 12 feet wide, and it's three feet encroaching, the percentage of the building that's encroaching is really minuscule. It's way less than 5% even. So, but I think, you know, to have an ASBelt at the end seems very prudent. And I think if we just ask that that's...
and I think if we just ask that that's, uh, complete or given to us by the time they look for a certificate of occupancy, it seems like we can cover our bases that way.
Yeah, and I think, and I think we've, uh, they've got the spirit of the, of the, of the legislation and we recognize that, and if all we have to do is just ask for verification of it, that would be the most expedient way and perhaps the cheapest way for, for them to, uh, to express the concern that's been raised.
Agreed. Commissioner Fikes.
Do we need to add conditions that Commissioner Cotton brought up about the, um, access doors to the north and south, you said? As opposed to accessing on the east and west?
Oh, for the mechanical room itself? Again, you know, like I said, depending on what it looks like, it could already be designed and laid out and pipes sticking up right where we would tell them to have to put a door, which would be kind of a tough thing to deal with too. I don't think that that's a huge deal, especially since they own the property next door. I think that's, um... Commissioner Glenn Denny.
Yeah, and they did bring it to us, so, uh, you know, no, no good deed goes unpunished. Well...
Maybe this time.
Yeah, we're, yeah, they will, yeah, we'll probably, probably should accept them at their word, just ask for an ASBelt for the certificate of, certificate of occupancy. And, uh, they own the lot next door. If there's a real hiccup for, uh, refinancing or whatever, they have the, uh, the means to remedy it by moving a, a lot line. It's, it's all, it's all controllable, it's all, uh, discoverable, it's all reasonably explained. So, I, I will be voting for this, uh, for this exception.
We want to make an amendment to require the ASBelt then? Would that be something we want to do? Director Mitchell.
You can ask for it, um, just to have it on the record. And I can assure you, if I went to the applicant and said, hey, we're going to hold your seal until we get an ASBelt, she will get it to us. So, you know, typically I would say, yeah, let's put it. But I, I think, since I've been here, this is maybe the third encroachment permit, I think like it probably would just be best to put that as a boilerplate condition for encroachment permits. If, since I've, you know, usually this is how I learn what your commission wants moving forward. So, I think just to make it consistent, just like with guide service and stuff, we put hours of operation, let's go ahead and add this condition for consistency.
Very good. Any other discussion? Commissioner Glenn Denny.
Now, do we have to, uh, present the, the exception? Or is it just going to be in part of your discussion with the applicant?
Director Mitchell.
You mean adding the condition? I think one of your commissioners would need to make a motion to add a condition to the resolution that an ASBelt certification will be provided prior to the certificate of occupancy issuance.
Commissioner Glenn Denny.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, I, I move that we add a condition stating that a, uh, an ASBelt drawing should be provided to, uh, the building official administration as, as a condition of, uh, accepting or, uh, or a punchless item for certificate of occupancy for this structure in the city of Kenai. Thank you.
Second.
A second, ask for unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent's been asked for, any objections? Seeing done, we will add that condition. Now, we have the main motion as amended. Any other discussion? Seeing done, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Halsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodard?
Yes.
Commissioner Costin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fikes?
Yes.
Commissioner Twade?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, and there is a 15-day appeal period with this encroachment permit, correct? Yeah, yep, so, um, after 15 days, if no one has filed an appeal, the permit will be granted. Um, that will move us all the way down to reports. And since we do not have a council liaison, we'll go on to report number two, the Borough planning, and Commissioner Fikes.
All righty, so, on Monday, we had five plats that were granted administrative approval and that pushed us into our...
Whoa, hold on.
Sorry, uh, new business, uh, part two, uh, the Strawberry Hill Estates?
Consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. I'll shut my mouth.
Commissioner Fikes, sorry that he interrupted you, you can continue.
That's all good. New business was a public hearing quasi-judicial matter, as I stated earlier, and it was a, uh, building setback encroachment, uh, permit. And that was for a 20 by 24 garage to be constructed in a 20-foot building setback. And that one was in the Californski Beach area off of, um, Marywood. And so, that one was denied. And then we had a unfinished business, and that was the remand for a building setback encroachment. And that one was in the Ridgeway area up on Holler Street. And so, that one, and after discussion and, um, adjudicative sessions, um, they ultimately, um, upheld their original decision to approve that. And then, let's see, we had some director's comments after that. And the director's comments were finally, after much, um, debate and discussion, the gravel ordinance has been passed and it will actually go into effect one year from now. And after six years of review, it's finally come to fruition. So, there was quite a bit of effort that went into that gravel ordinance. So, that, that was a huge win for the Borough to have that finally resolved. And then we had some, um, training lined up for December 11th, um, to go through pretty much what you saw Director Mitchell, um, show us today and what that looks like is how to get to findings and how to find support for standards. So, at the Borough's December 11th meeting, it was decided that it wasn't going to be a very heavy one, so it was going to be a good opportunity for staff and the attorney to go ahead and see if they can go through that with some of the folks. And so, that was going to take place. And then ultimately, we also had some discussion on our bylaws. And so, the Borough has never had any bylaws before. And so, through the experience of what we had taking place on the remand, we have a hybrid style of, um, meetings. And what that means is we have folks that can, um, afford to, uh, accommodate themselves and show up at the Borough in, um, Saldana. I think there was, uh, three of us, Kenai, Saldana, and I think, um, Sterling was present. And then the rest of the folks could be Sewer, could be Anchor Point, could be Homer. They all participate via Zoom. And so, some of the comments that were brought up in our draft on the bylaws is, um, if we go into adjudicative session, what does that look like for somebody who's on Zoom? Well, that was brought up. So, what that looked like for us, when we went into adjudicative session this first time, the three of us that were in chambers excused the public and so we began to debate and discuss. But in order to have participation back and forth between those that are present and those that are on Zoom, as you can see, it's all on mic. So, if somebody's standing on the outside of the doors, not really private. So, that was brought up. So, then, another opportunity came forward, is there's a gentleman who's long-served on the commission and he resides in Homer and unfortunately was in a horrible traffic accident. And so, he has since been in recovery and unable to drive and is now, um, through his own admission, he is, um, disabled. So, are we going to rule that he can no longer participate if we do have these, uh, remands and we go into adjudicative session? So, nothing was finalized. Again, this is only drafts, but I thought it was just a huge opportunity to get some dialogue and discussion on some real concerns. As we've made that transition into these hybrid style of meetings, are we going to be denying this person their, um, American Disability Act and telling them that they can't participate? And, and, you know, if we're going to go into adjudicative sessions, how can we accommodate that if we do go into it? So, that was some of the stuff that came out at the Borough level. So, yeah, I look forward to it, that they're addressing these concerns and they're pushing forward and getting us some training and stuff, so, really good one. Thanks.
Thank you, any questions? All right, whoa.
I would just, uh, maybe as a, as a resource, uh, reach out to the, the court system because they use Zoom and they do, uh, private meetings within their, their Zooms, uh, breakout sessions in, in private rooms.
Yeah, one of the folks testified was a school board member and she said, I guess, that they put like a telephone in the middle or something and that way, when we go into adjudicative session, it's only being transmitted through that one device and that's somehow a secure one, but that is a good point about the court system. I didn't even think about that.
All right, thank you. Again, we'll move on to item three, administration. Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Commissioner Twade. Only have a few things, first and foremost. I have my second part-time admin, so I am back to a full team. I'm really happy about it. Um, if you haven't had a chance to come upstairs, um, her name is Jasmine Nicely. She's going to be working the afternoons, so I have Beth McDonald working the morning. There will be an occasional overlap of, it is hard to have two parts-time staff doing two different things and trying to make sure we're all on the same page, not doing double the work. So, I do plan to have like bi-weekly team meetings, so therefore there'll be some overlap. But please introduce yourself to them. They're both excited to be here and very driven and motivated, so, um, I'm excited. One, a few things I wanted to share with you, because I realize a lot of people are not aware, if you use the Borough's GIS map, um, they are going to be updating it. If you haven't heard already, uh, the old map that you're probably used to seeing, they're going to stop updating the data. And I'm going to pull it up here, um, so that you can see and hopefully whoever's listening learns this as well. This is their old platform, what you're probably normally used to seeing, their GIS. This will no longer, they're working towards consolidating to one map because when you go to their hub, you see the different, the terrains, the basic viewers, the flood. Now, it's all going to be consolidated into their, um, and I can't see that far, which their new platform will be View K P B. So, I would encourage you, if you use the old platform, to start familiarizing yourself to this new platform since effective October 31st. That'll be the last day they'll stop updating it. And then, at the end of the year, the old maps will be permanently, um, I think, closed off. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And if you want to share that with anyone, yes.
Now, you, you say they're, they're going from, from showing the profile of the land and all of this to, to a cartoon?
Uh, you know, you have to...
Have an imagination, yeah, I do.
Toggle on the different layers, yeah.
No, so it's, it's just, it's a, it's a change of access, it's not a change of information that's being presented.
Correct, just the viewer, the platform itself is going to look different. I will say, there are nuance of it that I'm not a fan of. Since the old platform, you can do the search box by parcel or street address. Unfortunately, in this new platform, you have to click this nice fancy button that says "Search", and then you're given this six different criterias, by parcel ID, owner address, street name. You have to click the radio button and then click the information that you're looking for. It's not what it...
If you, if you did that, you'd know the answers already.
Yes. Yeah, I'm adjusting to it myself. I do find myself still going to the old one, but I know they're still working to carry over a lot of the information, so I don't want to be shy and say this is terrible quite yet. Um, we'll see what the new year brings. I, I mean, it's still a lot of workaround. There are one aspect that, within this new platform, is the elevation profile that I found to be very helpful. That is a feature that I didn't see in the last one. And I'm sure they're going to incorporate more of what's in these other ones, these older ones that's been around. I don't think they've gotten there yet. So, I just at least wanted to bring this to your attention because a lot of people I talk to when I'm showing this map, they're like, what is this? And I'm like, this is the new one, that you probably should get familiar with before it goes away, the old one, and start adjusting to it. And of course, I'm sure if you have comments and stuff, you can provide it to their GIS team early on before they close out the old one. So, I want to put the word out, um, and that's not going to me. So, again, by the end of this month, the data in the old maps will not be updated. They're already transitioning to this new one. By the end of the year, the old maps will be gone. That's what I wanted to point out to you. And another FYI, if you haven't heard, Kenai Recording Office is permanently closed since September 29th. So, you know, from my standpoint, when I deal with land leases, it's the only time I deal with recording. So, I just wanted to share with you and the public that that is formalized. And so, if you're looking to record something, you're going to have to find someone who does e-recording or send it to Anchorage District Office to get stuff recorded. So, that's for the delay if you're mailing it. Yeah, I mean, if you're doing real estate transactions, they have a title company, title company has the e-recording. We will work hopefully on the city. If we have enough, uh, demand internally, we'll probably subscribe to e-recording. At this time, we don't see that demand, so it doesn't make sense to, to spend that money for the subscription. Another thing for your commission to anticipate in the next month is the commission committee cert, there will be a survey going out to your commission in regards to, um, driven by the clerk's office of what you would like to see goals that you'll be working on to, um, I guess, have a better strategic plan of what commission wants to do and having council stand behind you and agreeing that these are things you're going to do. So, there are going to be a survey out and maybe like, as well as about zooming in, what does that look like, you know, because you're aware of our current policy. So, that could be something that's brought up in your survey as well. I mentioned this earlier with capital improvement plan. It is being circulated right now. Unfortunately, what is in the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, is nothing related to planning. So, I'm not bringing it forth to you. In the future, maybe, like I said, for example, tonight, if there are certain road improvement space in your decisions that affects certain corridors, you know, we do rezones or we see commercial districts, um, being increased, a capital improvement could be from your commission improvements, being proactive and putting that on the plan for the city. So, at this time, you might hear that other commissions are coming in reviewing CIP plan. It's not affecting planning. We don't have anything that we have proposed in the list, but if you want to look at it, it is online under the Public Works webpage, the full Capital Improvement Plan, and maybe get ideas of what your commission might want to put forth in the future. So, if you're wondering why it's not before you, because that is within your responsibility to review an annual CIP, there's really nothing for you, for me to present to you. And then, last but not least, I went to a training, for FEMA training on warning coordination. I went to it because, you know, with the flood in the Borough and then with natural disasters, you know, with the notification, the tsunami warning in Homer, there was like a lack of communication, consistent information, you know, was it something we need to act on? So, I decided to go to this course. That was in Anchorage at the earlier beginning of the month. And I learned a lot in terms of weather, weather prediction. You know, you see the weather report and you're like, man, it's terribly off. It's because in Alaska, we don't have a lot of resources out there because, I don't know what they're called, like beacons to determine the changes of weather and the setup, yeah. So, with that being said, they predict what the resources they have and they kind of rely on us, the people who live in the area, to report, hey, it's not raining. You predicted 30% or 90% rain and it's not raining, right? In most of your apps, there is a report kind of the correct weather. That is how you can help. If they get enough feedback, they'll be like, okay, your people here in the area, if you see rain four inches when they're predicting two, by having this data being forward to them and getting enough data, they can revise it and adjust accordingly. This is how we can work forward when doing emergency management stuff. I do have a passion about it, being a medic in the Army. So, um, you can be a participant as a weather spotter, meaning when there's storms and stuff, you know, they might ask you to go out there and check and verify and measure. This just helps each other out, mostly being in Alaska. This just helps each other out mostly being in Alaska, being remote. We don't have a lot of resources and kind of have to rely on the people who are living where they're at or being where they're at to provide that. So, I encourage you to go on your app and see that. If you have an Apple, you can scroll down to the bottom and it says you can change or say, no, this is not what's the case. So, I thought that was a really neat information that I learned as well as, as a city, we can be certified as storm-ready or tsunami-ready. What that means for us is because now that we're in national, within the National Flood Plan Insurance Program, by being a certified city, storm-ready or tsunami-ready, there will be further discounts for those who need flood insurance. I know that was something that probably a lot of people didn't want the city to be a participant of, where they would be required to have flood insurance mostly if they're in the special flood hazard area. I'm finding ways to reduce and give discounts if they happen to be required to have flood insurance. So, I'm going to be working on getting the city certified as storm-ready. That's fairly easy to do after going to this training and I didn't know that was the case. So, and with that, that really concludes my administration report. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Glenn Denny?
Now, thank you. You know, you mentioned that our city council once again is going to redefine our, our roles and responsibilities. Has any of them ever looked at Title 29 to see what the true roles and responsibilities are for planning and zoning commissions within the state of Alaska? I mean, are there things that we, that we really can look at and actually have original jurisdiction on? And is that in their view or are we just going to sit here in our little silo until, until something comes before us? That's a rather strident view of it, but, but I would like to see that we're going to have work sessions regarding, regarding the new roles and responsibilities and how we interact with, with our, with our city council and how they interact with me. Already, I'm forbidden from speaking with them as a citizen. I can come and say anything. So, yeah, that's, thank you, Jeff. Now, that's, that's, we're, we might as well just give us some rubber stamps here other than we can maybe say, well, why don't we have a, a little ASBelt put on a plat or something like that. But it's planning and zoning, not our Title 29. We, we have responsibilities that were given to us by the state and is that being recognized in this discussion is my question, I guess.
Director Mitchell?
Thank you, Chair Tweed. Commissioner Glenn Denny. So, as far as I will say about this commission and committee, it's supposed to be really an action plan that your commission come forth about what you want to see, not necessarily I think your role unless you're proposing policy outside your scope that may not be listed in our current zoning. It's not to say that-
Title 29.
Right. It's not to say, it could be brought up, but I don't think that was the intent of this survey. It's really to talk, I think primarily focus on an action plan. So, the issue, I don't think it's really with P and Z because we have a lot on our agenda. Other commission, it's not really as active as your commission and so, I think this whole survey is probably geared towards the other commissions and committee, but I definitely will look into this section that you're referencing and look into it and how it really aligns with our current Title 2014 and is it consistent with your roles and duties as listed in our municipal code? Happy to look into that, but-
Thank you. I was hoping you would do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm going to have to be here for the next 20 years, but no, you know, I like learning and I like doing the right, things the right way. I mean, there's a lot of things in code that I definitely want to update and be consistent and be up to speed of where we're at, catching code to where we are in time and probably trying to stay ahead of it is my passion, so.
Now that she has two assistants, right?
Two part-time, let me be very clear.
Yeah, I, I just, as an aside, I think until you really get up and running, it's, you're going to have to work still, still double time just to make sure everybody is all aligned and just like timing an old Ford Flathead V8. You got to get, you got to get the gaps just right on the, on the spark. Anyway, you're, you're doing well and you, you, you have our respect and thank you for being very forthright and accurate in your response and you follow through consistently and don't leave us hanging and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any update on Mr. Beth's project he's working in?
We are hoping to bring something, a draft of the code before your commission on the November 8th, so the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Mitchell? All right. We'll move on to additional public comments. Double check, make sure nobody's online.
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak at this time, you may raise your hand.
All right. Looked good. Next meeting is November 8th. Anyone looking for an excused absence for that meeting? Mr. Costin, you're not eligible. Although you did a great job of zooming in, so I, I can't even. Commissioners, comments and questions. Commissioner Glenn Denny?
Well, I think I commented all through the meeting and I think, I think, I think, I think we had good discussion tonight. I really do. And I like how we, how we, well, it's not banter back and forth. We discuss back and forth and, and, and give our thoughts for good reasons and, and the subject of standards and findings such as the borough is going through is good and I had the, a happy circumstance to, to exhibit that skill during a roads meeting the other day and was able to get a road approved. So, so thank you. Thank you once again for, for good times, good meetings here and my plan is, is that I'm not going to re-up for P and Z. I'm just going to try and slide over the Harbor Commission, something like that and that, there's, there's lots of young people with talent and they'd probably take it to the next level that, that I, I'm unable to achieve. And so, I, I just wish everybody good luck and go, go find people that are, they're out there and they want to serve. Sometimes they just don't know how. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Woodard?
Well, I was, I was happy to see that the last meeting was canceled, so I didn't miss out on anything. However, I traded rain for rain, so it wasn't all that exciting. Oh, glad to be back.
All right. Commissioner Costin?
Well, I'm glad to be back in person. It's kind of rough doing Zoom meetings sometimes, but I'm glad to do that. But I was having a great time outside and I will encourage everybody to, to think about this time of year, smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, and how many people do we see or read about that get carbon dioxide poisoning during this time of year? Boilers are inefficient, something's going on. So, I would encourage people to take that very seriously.
Very good point. Vice Chair Halsted?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Fikes?
All good.
All right. And I have nothing more to add other than to welcome Mr. Costin back and with that, all the business complete, the meeting is adjourned.